Good eve- good evening, everyone. Hi. We're gonna get started. I'd like to welcome you to the Village of Palis Park Council Meeting, Monday, November 27th. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Patan.
Present.
Commissioner Wade.
Here.
Commissioner Polk.
Yep.
Commissioner Reed. And Mayor Milovich Walters.
Present. May we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Approval of the regular council meeting minutes from November 13th. Does anybody have any changes or corrections? If not, I seek a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion is, or a motion in a second. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Mr. Patan.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yep.
Mayor Milovich Walters.
Yes. Moving on, we have no recognition proclamations or appointments or presentations. We also do not have any hearings. So moving on to the consent agenda, all items on the consent agenda are routine or have been brought forward at the direction of the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. A. To approve a Village of Palis Park temporary liquor license to Durbin's Pizza for the Village of Palis Park Tree Lighting and Holiday Party Event that will take place on November 30th, 2023, from 5:00 PM to 7:30 PM at the Recreation Center. B. To approve Ordinance 2023-24, an ordinance regarding the Illinois Paid Leave for All Workers Act for the Village of Palis Park, Illinois. The ordinance states that the village has paid leave policies in place and no additional obligations regarding mandatory paid leave shall apply to the village in its capacity as employer. C. Approve payments of invoices on the warrant list dated November 27, 2023 in the amount of $38,747.41. I seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
A second.
Hearing a motion in a second. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Patan.
Yes.
Mr. Polk.
Yes.
And Mayor Milovich Walters.
Yes. Moving on, items of old business. Anybody have any? If not, Board Commissioning Committee recommendations. I will turn to Commissioner Wade. Would you like to handle these?
Sounds good. Uh, thank you, Mayor. The, I have two items for the, uh, council to, uh, to hear here tonight. Uh, the first one is agenda matter, uh, ZBA 2023-03. An application has been filed requesting a variation from the requirements of Section 1268, Spot 02, uh, E., front yards to permit the construction of, in addition to, to the existing home, where the required front yard setback is 17 feet, 17.315 feet. The applicant is proposing a front yard setback of 13.89 feet. Subject property is commonly known as 7925 Palis Avenue in Palis Park. Little bit of a background, the subject property is zoned R1A and is currently approved with a single family, uh, is currently approved with a single-family residence. The applicant proposed to construct a 625-square-foot addition to the existing home to align with the existing front facade of the home along the north property line. The required front setback is 17.315 feet, which is based on the average of the block. For the applicant to align, the proposed addition with the existing side of the home of variance was, uh, to allow a setback of 13.89 feet, uh, is required. Uh, staff recommends, and also the zoning board, held a public hearing regarding, uh, ZBA 2023-03 on November 8th. Uh, one member of the public spoke in favor of the position and the Zoning Board of Appeals recommended the approval, 7-0, for the requested variation. Uh, do we have any questions? No questions, I would move to approve Ordinance 2023 dash... Is that right? Dash 21 or dash 03?
21, ZBAA.
Oh, 20, okay, got it. Uh, dash 21, an ordinance approving a certain front yard setback variation, uh, commonly known as 7925 Palis Avenue.
I'll second.
Hearing a motion in a second. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Mr. Patan.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yes.
Mayor Milovich Walters.
Yes.
Uh, my next one is, uh, um, uh, an item for us to consider. Uh, ZBA ca- uh, case 2023-02. An application has been filed requesting a variation from the requirements of Section 1268, Spot 02, Side Yard F., side yards to permit the construction of an attached pool house along with a swimming pool, uh, where the required corner yard setback is 50 feet. The applicant is proposing a s- uh, corner side yard setback of 26.92 feet. The subject property is commonly known as 20 Huntley Road in Palis Park. Little bit of background on this, the subject property is zoned R1A and is currently approved with a single-family residence. The applicant proposed, uh, proposes to construct a pool house and pool on the subject property. The pool house is to be connected to the existing home via a covered porch, resulting in the pool house being considered in addition to the existing home per code. Uh, the subject property is unique in that three of the four sides of the property, uh, the property front, a street Huntley to the south, Sunny Slope to the east, and Wolf to the west, with the corner side yard setbacks being applicable along both east and west sides of the property. The proposed addition is 26.92 feet from, uh, from the west on Wolf Road, encroaching into the 50, uh, into the 50-foot corner yard by 23.08 feet. Uh, I understand the applicant is, uh, would the applicant like to, uh, make some comments tonight?
Uh, no, I'll put everything in the letter, so. I just, I think the zoning board, I don't know if you guys will reconsider.
No, we did, we did. It's, so... Do you wanna take this or you want me to say anything?
No, no, um, I just, it, I see other people in the audience. I just wanna make sure there's no other public comment for this one issue right now. Please feel free to just step up if you can keep it brief, that'd be great. Thank you. Only 'cause then we can hear you, otherwise we can't hear you from there.
Um, I did, so...
No, come on, come on. Yeah, no, I, we, I believe we got your letter. Are you, you're Nancy, right?
Uh, I'm Nancy.
I'm Nancy. I'm sorry, yeah, go right ahead.
Um, so, you know, my, my letter should state everything, um, that I have concerns over.
Sure.
Um, first of all, you know, it, this isn't any kind of hardship case where they need to add an addition on to the house. Um, they're relatively new to the neighborhood, so if they had plans to build a pool house, one would think they would have checked the zoning laws back at that time before they purchased the property. Um, we, you know, it, I, at least myself, I, when I purchased the property, I went to the village hall and I checked zoning laws 'cause I knew I wanted to do some, you know, changes to the property. So I made sure before I even bought the house that I knew I could do what I wanted to and still stay within the zoning laws. Um, I have concerns over us having, cutting the zoning by almost half. It's like, if we had plan, if we have plans of approving this, why do we even have zoning ordinances in the first place? I could see maybe a foot or two here or there. But 20, almost 25 feet, uh, cutback on the, on the zoning ordinance, I think, is excessive. Um, I also have concerns as to, um, you know, how is it gonna look in the neighborhood? It's like, if there would be houses just jam-packed on that property. Um, we also have concerns over the fact that that property has, uh, water issues already. Um, they put a berm and a ditch in front of that property to try and keep the, the basement from flooding. So adding yet another building to that lot, how is that gonna impact not only their house, which that's obviously their problem, but, um, any of the surrounding homes? Also have concerns over now, it's supposedly attached to the house, but with a breezeway in between. Um, is that ultimately then gonna become yet another living quarters for somebody else and potentially being a rental property down the road? So these are all the concerns that I have that I hope you guys consider as a part of, uh, taking a look at this recommendation.
Thank you, thank you very much. Would you like to address?
Uh, in my letter, I just spoke to the fact that I feel these aroneka lots were less and building, another building on the lot is just overcrowding. And that's one of the reasons why I moved to Palis Park is because these facets of the area that, um, everything's open. We don't have a lot of routing on the lots and that, so that's my...
Thank you.
...opinion, a little bit of the why the zoning laws. If one person's gonna do it in my subdivision, I don't know what's gonna hold the door, so.
Thank you. Mike, do you wanna go ahead?
Yeah.
Okay.
So a couple of things, and thank you for commenting, a couple of things, regardless of how long the resident has been here, that, you know, that they have the, the right to, to come here and, and make whatever variance they want to. Um, and I'm a young resident too. You know, I, I haven't been here very long, but I would hope that if my time were to come and I wanted to invest in my home and my property for my family and my kids for generations, I hope that the fact that I don't, haven't lived here as long as you have wouldn't, wouldn't make that big of a difference. Um, Dave, I would ask, though, that it, it did get shot down by, it did get a negative recommendation by the, by the zoning board, 5-2. Are there any adjustments you'd be willing to make moving forward so maybe we can continue this? And then hear your case again at our next meeting if we were to continue it and then be able to kick it back to the zoning board?
Yeah, I, you know, this...
And, and the one thing I don't wanna do, you know, and I know you're, you're new and you have a young fam, right? So I don't want to say, you know what, I'm going, we're gonna squash whatever investment you wanna make in your home or anything like that, no. We wanna work with you, but we want, you know, with this negative recommendation, we don't want...
Yeah, understood. I, and, you know, this question was brought up to the zoning board by one of the members of the zoning board committee, uh, and it was posed to the other members of the board, to which we got zero feedback about what we could do to the plans to make them more palatable to the board. And I, I'm not looking to invest thousands of dollars into my architect to have him go pull, you know, do new plans that we have no guidance on. So if you guys wanna give us guidance about what might be more palatable, then certainly we will go back and, we, you know, go back to the drawing board.
So if I may make a suggestion, I, I think what would be great is speaking with our director, Mark. Uh, he has some suggestions and ideas, not looking for full-out architectural plans. I, I forget the term you used, but just a, what was it, Mark?
Conceptual site plan.
Yeah, conceptual site plan, um, so that we can send it back to the zoning board and they can see, you know, what adjustments you've made and see if it, it fits better when looking for a variance.
We're definitely fine with that.
Okay, excellent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mark, can I just leave you on that?
Any other questions? All right.
Did you have anything? Okay.
Uh, so with that, I can move to... Oh, I messed this up last time right there.
Sorry, dude.
Yeah. Uh, we can continue this matter to the December 11th, 2023 meeting, given that he, uh, gives some, some different revisions and stuff like that and you can work with Mark to, uh, to make that happen and then at that point we can... Do I need to add anything else or no?
Just make a motion to continue it to the December 11th.
Before you do that, does it have to go back to ZBA before it comes back?
No, no, I hope.
That's all of it?
Yeah. Uh, okay, cool, then I will make a motion to, uh, continue ZBA 2023-02 to the December 11th, 2023 meeting, right? Go ahead.
And I'll second.
Hearing a motion in a second. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Mr. Patan.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk. Mayor Milovich Walters.
Yes. Thank you all for coming, though, and sharing your concerns and thank you for being willing to work with Mark.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Moving on to information and updates. Public Works and Streets Recreation Report, Commissioner Patan.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Um, for Public Works and Streets this evening, I have one agenda matter for our council and mayor to consider. It's, uh, replacing an existing, uh, 10-inch water valve and installing a new meter on 119th Street. Um, the 10-inch water valve that exists now on 119th Street near One Park Place is leaking and needs to be replaced. In addition, the meter for One Park Place also needs to be replaced. Public Works reviewed two quotes for this work. One from Aries Incorporated at a cost of $13,237.83 and a second from Sunset Sewer and Water for a cost of $11,035. Both companies are qualified to, to do the work and have also done repairs for the village. Public Works would like to accept the proposal from Sunset Sewer and Water. Work will be done on the weekend to reduce the disturbance to customers as both One Park Place and Brookside will need to be shut down during the repair. Monies are available in the water fund for this project. Uh, if there's no questions, I'd like to move to approve the proposal from Sunset Water, Sunset Sewer and Water in the amount of $11,035.
I'll second that.
Any questions? If not, a hearing of motion in a second. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Patan.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yep.
And Mayor Milovich Walters.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, that concludes my, um, report for Public Works and Streets. And now for announcements for the Recreation Department. Uh, first announcement is our winter programming guide covering the events and programs in December, January, and February is now available to view on our website and registration is open for all winter programming and events. New this season includes a tiny-tot open gym, pickleball open gym, and more senior programming. And that website is www.palispark.org. Uh, this Thursday, November 30th, is our Palis Park Tree Lighting and Holiday Party, the Jolly Jamboree, and Holiday Market. It's gonna be an amazing night filled with activities, a holiday market, food, beverages, and of course, an opportunity to take photos with Santa. This is a free event with no registration required. The event is from 5:00 PM to 7:30 PM with the village tree being lit at 5:30 PM in front of the Recreation Center with the help of our mayor and Santa and all of our guests. This event is presented in partnership with the Palis Park Newcomers and Welcoming Committee. So thank you. Newcomer and wel- welcoming committee. Um, second, or third, uh, on the, on, on my notes here is the Breakfast with Santa, which is Saturday, December 9th. So join Santa and the Recreation Department for a breakfast and photos on Saturday, December 9th from 10:30 AM to 12:30 PM. This event is registration-based and spots are limited, so sign up today. And then finally, we have some employment opportunities with the Rec- Department of Recreation and Parks. Um, we are looking for two positions to fill. The first one is a building attendant position, which is a part-time role with flexible hours, primarily working weekdays, you know, Monday through Friday, uh, in the evenings, and then weekends assisting with department rentals, programming, and facility maintenance. And the second opportunity for employment is the Recreation Supervisor Position. This is a full-time role that coordinates, develops, coordinates, develops, and administers a wide variety of recreation programs. Um, the events while being a vital team member and in overall operations of the department, including facility and grounds, rental, and administrative systems. Both are great opportunities to gain experience in the many facets of Recreation and Parks Department operations. Visit the Employment Section of the village's website for more information on both positions and applications. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Patan. I'm just going to emphasize again, there will be open pickleball days at the gym this winter. People have been asking about it, so please show up, participate, enjoy it. Uh, and then also, please come out to the tree lighting, uh, this Thursday. Like, uh, Commissioner Patan mentioned, the newcomer welcoming committee is jumping in and helping out Rec Department to build this up to a really big event like we used to have. We have lots of vendors and food and, uh, lots of fun for the kids. And Santa's coming in in a fire truck, so you don't wanna miss that. So make sure you get there before 5:30, 'cause that's when he's coming. Um, so 5:00 to 7:30 this Thursday, so don't miss it. And now on to Commissioner Wade with Building and Public Property Report.
Uh, thank you. Uh, for my report this evening, when looking to hire a trustworthy business, uh, you can always contact the Better Business Bureau. Uh, the Better Business Bureau helps people find and recommend businesses they can trust. People can be overwhelmed with choices and often unsure about where to find verified, unbiased information. There are thousands of websites that offer a range of information, including reviews, reports, directories, listings, and gripe sites. Uh, the Better Business Bureau is the only place you can find it all. Contact them at 312-832-0500 or triple B dot org. In the Permit Department, the Building Department processed five permits from November 7th to November 21st, 2023, resulting in $2,908, bringing our fiscal year-to-date to $125,939.7. I also have one other thing for us to, uh, one other agenda matter. Uh, this deal's with, uh, plot consolidation. Uh, approving a plot consolidation from, uh, 117 to 119 Forest Edge Drive in Palis Park, Illinois. The village has received an application for consolidation, uh, for 117 to 119 Forest Edge from Kurt Ladd, representing the owner of the subject property, Malik Ali. The subject property consists of two parcels containing a total of 2.66 acres. The owner would like to consolidate the two parcels into one to allow for the development of a single-family home. There are public utility and draining easements that would need to be vacated after utility infrastructure is properly relocated. The, uh, these items would need, uh, to be substantially completed prior to the issuance of a building permit for the new home, so. Uh, that is the reason for this consolidation. The request is being made at this time to facilitate the relocation of the non-village utilities. Staff does recommend this, and do we have any questions?
The only question I have, Mark, is who, who pays for the relocation of the utilities?
The applicant would.
Thank you.
Very good. Uh, after that, I move to approve Ordinance 2023-23, an ordinance approving a plot of consolidation, uh, 117 and 119 Forest Edge Drive in Palis Park, Illinois.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Mr. Patan.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yep.
Mayor Milovich Walters.
Yes, motion carries. Anything else for you, Commissioner Wade?
Uh, that concludes my report, yeah.
Okay, fair enough. On to Public Health and Safety Report, Commissioner Polk.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is the police activity report from the 12th through the 26th of November of the year 2023. 2,092 calls per service, um, it's up a little bit. An additional 14 citizen assists, took 17 case reports, unfortunately had five accident records. Arrested an adult, fortunately no juveniles, didn't have any, uh, vehicle impacts. Made 115 traffic stops, of which there were 81 speeding tickets, an additional 24 adjudication tickets, and 21 different moving violations. Can tell you that the speeding takes have just been gradually increasing over the last six months or so. Normally averaged around, oh, 30, 35, or 81 for those two weeks. Uh, and then I have a couple of quick announcements. Um, the first is regarding the Palis Park Police Cadet Holiday Food Drive. Uh, as always, it's become a rather significant tradition in the park. The Palis Park Police Cadet Program, uh, Annual Holiday Food Drive is well underway. So we're looking for donations of non-perishable foods, canned goods, boxed goods, that are not outdated, please. Um, and we'll accept them either here at the police department during normal business hours or you can drop them off at the rec center, the library, or the metro station, as well as the capter center. If you don't wanna walk that way, you can walk this way. Um, and that will be going on for a while. So again, thank you very much. If you have any questions, give us a holler, 708-671-3770. And then just a couple of other safety tips. Um, some of these are pretty obvious and I'll skip them. Um, but there's a couple here that might interest you. These particularly are important when you're sort of doing in-person shopping. I'm sure there are still people who have perhaps even cash and walk into a, I think they call them stores, and look at merchandise with their hands and their eyes. So if you're one of those people, um, a couple of things you might wanna think about. Make sure your phone is charged because, uh, if you are in need of some sort of assistance and you've run down the phone talking to your kids on the way, um, uh, you're gonna be in big hurts 'cause you don't have any way to call for assistance. Um, I prefer that you put your phone away when you're walking to and from your car so that you can pay attention to what's going on around you. Lots of reports of people looking down at their phone and lo and behold, the car is gone. So, um, think about that. Uh, tell somebody where you're going and what you're doing. And then my favorite, trust your instincts. Something doesn't seem right, somebody seems a little out of place, doesn't look like they belong, or has a particular interest in you or the car, find help. That's where the charged phone can be very useful. Uh, so again, um, be aware of your surroundings and, uh, make sure that, uh, you don't leave the presents in the back of the car, put them in the trunk. We don't like seeing cars locked with unattended children in them either. So, uh, if you gotta take the rugrats, make sure they come with you. Um, might be better just to, uh, leave them with grandma and/or grandpa and/or someone, so. And then I have one other thing to talk about, and that's about the porch pirates. So this is the time of year where people who don't shop in stores don't hold their, love the items in their hands when they're buying them, often order and have it delivered, which is a terrific, uh, convenience. And, uh, given we had, uh, Black Friday and Cyber Monday and all that sort of stuff, sometimes there's some bargains you just can't resist out there. Um, uh, know that you can have sometimes those articles delivered somewhere else beside your home. Um, so Amazon has multiple drop-off points. Um, if you know that you're gonna be out of town or away from your house, might talk to a neighbor and see if it's okay for something to be dropped off there. Um, again, porch pirates will follow the delivery trucks and they will look for interesting items to pinch. So, you know, would, would I mind if they pinched a $7 pair of socks? Probably not. Would I mind if they pinched a $750 camera? Probably. So think about maybe having those delivered in a different way. And while we're talking about deliveries, um, I'd like to put a question to the village. Um, we've kicked this around a couple times before, a year or so ago. Um, currently, the village does not have any restrictions on home deliveries in terms of times of day. So, uh, I'm told by my, uh, police colleagues that it's not unusual, particularly this time of the year, for them to see delivery trucks out at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning delivering items. I know I had an item delivered sometime between midnight and 5:00 AM the other day, which surprised the heck out of me. So, uh, I'm soliciting opinions. I know what my opinion is, but you didn't elect me to just do what I wanna do. Um, uh, so my email is dpolk, D-P-O-L-K, at palispark, all one word, dot org. Um, uh, or you can call me and leave me a voicemail. All of those numbers are on the village website. And I'm interested whether you'd like to see a restriction of the, put in by the village, which will then have to be, uh, obeyed by the delivery services, and there are ways to be able to do that, other communities do that as well, of limiting deliveries to prior to 10:00 PM. Could be 9:00 PM, it doesn't really make any difference to me. So if you have an opinion and you'd like to, uh, voice it, uh, email me, give me a call. Um, stop me on the street, coffee with the cops next week, so, uh, Wednesday at 11:00. We'll all be at the Plush Horse. Um, and I believe, uh, Chief Miller, do you have anything else you'd like to add? That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Polk. Uh, moving on to Accounts and Finances. Commissioner Reed is not here this evening, but I don't believe there was anything correct. Okay, um, my report, I have nothing on the report, yay. Um, Clerk Aragoni.
I have no report this evening.
I have no report this evening.
That's moving us right along to Manager Bame, who has way too many things on his report.
I'll try to be brief. There's a couple of items I have for your consideration. The first is a D C E O grant agreement that we need approval on. D C E O is the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. So a sum of $50,000 was earmarked from the re-appropriated monies of Build Illinois Bond Fund to the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for a grant to the village of Palis Park for costs associated with capital improvements for constructing a playground and installing a sprinkler system. The grant application process through D C E O began by the village's application in August of 2022. So obviously, we're a little over a year into this process and we finally get the grant agreement. It was understood at the time that the village would be seeking reimbursement for money spent on the projects. At its April 10th, 2023 meeting, the village council approved two agenda items related to the grant, irrigation system, purchase and installation for the village green field, and village green park playground equipment replacement through new toys, leisure products. The state has now sent the grant agreement for execution by the village, so I'm seeking the council's approval to execute this grant agreement.
So everyone knows this was the money that the state gave us a long time ago and now they're going to finally give it to us. So I'm seeking a motion to approve this grant agreement, please.
Yeah, I can move to approve the execution of a grant agreement between the State of Illinois, Department of Commerce, and Economic Opportunity and the village of Palis Park.
And second.
Excellent. Hearing a motion and a second with the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
And Mayor Milovich Walters.
Yes. All right, up again.
All right. The next item is a consideration of a change of time for village council meetings. This has been an item that has been discussed from time to time over the years, but the meeting time was set at 7:30 PM per village code since 1997. In previous years, many of the council members were commuting from Chicago and the 7:30 start time was conducive to their schedules. You know, council members today, most people have flexibility in their work schedules. Many people work from home and not as many people are commuting to the city, especially on a Monday. Earlier start time of 6:30 PM would allow council staff and residents who choose to attend an opportunity to return home in an earlier hour. So we have an ordinance 2023 dash 22, which is a draft for an ordinance amending the village code regarding the start time of the regular village council meeting.
Yeah, I'll move to approve ordinance 2023 dash 22 and an ordinance amending Part Two, Title Four, Chapter 2022, Section 2020, Spot 03 of the village code in regard to the regular village council meeting time effective Jan. 1 of '24.
Second.
Any discussion, anyone? If not, hearing a motion and a second with the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Mayor Milovich Walters.
Yes. And up for the third time.
Finally, I've got one item to consider, a electric pricing proposal to supplier direct energy for the period of January 2024 through December 2025. Back in April of 2011, the village council went out and they had to bid for its electric energy supply for its commercial accounts. These are mainly our metro station accounts and our village utility accounts, those being the pumping stations, the lift stations, and so forth. By going out and seeking bids for our electric supply, we can save money on those accounts rather than being subjected to comm ed pricing, whatever it may be. While over the past number of years, we have been, had some pretty good rates, including one of the lowest our last term, electric rates have gone up. And this is due to a number of factors, mainly due to electric energy demand. Those are driven by household demands, computer demands, and electric vehicle charging demands. Cost that we have right now proposed to us, the lowest cost, and what we're recommending is a 24-month electric supply pricing proposal by supplier direct energy for the period of January 2024 through December 2025 at the rate of 5.228 cents per kilowatt hour. And this will ultimately save the village some money versus what we could be charged, projected right now to save the village about $7,300 annually.
Excellent. Anybody have any questions?
I have a couple. What's the current rate?
Is at 3.605 cents per kilowatt hour.
Oh.
Right. When we locked in that rate in period of February 22 to December of '23, that was 11.8% lower than the previous electric supply rate. So we were very fortunate in that. But that's why we go out to bid. This was the lowest rate and.
That's my second question. So this was a bidded rate?
Yes. Yes, we had six companies bid on our, on the supplying of this. And while this is not the lowest 12-month period, over the 24 months, it's believed we're going to save money because it's projected that the electric rates, the supply rates will likely go up due to the increased demand.
Are we using a broker for those bids?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Because I'm sure that people supplying the electricity are going to tell you it's going up now. And then the third question I have, is McCord part of that?
No.
Super group?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'd like to seek a motion, one way or the other.
I move to approve the 24-month electric supply pricing proposal by supplier direct energy for the period January 2024 through December 2025 at the rate of, is it 0.05228 kilowatts?
Yeah, it would be 5.228 cents per kilowatt hour.
Gotcha. Thank you. 5.28 kilowatts. 228 kilowatts.
I'll second that.
Hearing a motion and a second with the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Mayor Milovich Walters.
Yes. Are you done, Manager Bame?
I am done.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to announcements. The Palis Lions Club, which now I'm a member of, 24th Annual Christmas Tree Sale is going on now at 127th and Harlem. They offer truly fresh, green trees that are grown organically without chemicals or pesticides. The lot is run by volunteers with all the proceeds going to local charities, including the Center, Special Olympics of Illinois, South Suburban Crisis Center, and more. And the trees will be sold through December 11th or until all the trees are sold, and I hear they're going very quickly. So if you're going to get a fresh tree, hurry up and get out there. In addition to the police cadet food drive that Commissioner Polk talked about, our village is hosting our holiday charity drive benefiting Mantino Veterans Home, NOS and NOS Animal Shelter. Their wish list can be found on our village Facebook page and is also available here at the village hall. Drop-off sites are located here in the village hall, as well as the rec center, and we will accept donations until January 12th. So please think about donating to all three of those worthy causes. Also, Commissioner Polk, when talking about the porch pirates, mentioned today was Cyber Monday, while tomorrow is Giving Tuesday. And if you're looking for somewhere to make a donation, one of the organizations that works in our community is Pathlights, and any donation you make on Giving Tuesday will be doubled. And lastly, if you have not downloaded the village app simplicity, what are you waiting for? It's time to download it. It's the best way to keep up on everything that's happening and get alerts when something is going on. So download the app today. It's free to you, it's free to us, it just keeps you updated. And now that brings us to citizens and visitors, comment period. Does anybody in the audience like to address the council this evening? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second with the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Mayor Milovich Walters.
Yes, thank you, and have a good evening. See you on Thursday at the tree lighting.
Be safe out there.